Everyone, I would like to welcome you to the May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five Board of Education meeting. We are calling the meeting to order at seven eleven P M. We apologize for the late start. We had some technical difficulties. Now, if everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. A reading of meeting notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings laws were enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Star Ledger, posted with the township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and at the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of today's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public via the Board of Education website. Mister Cruz, could you please call attendance?
Mister Walker. For the record, Mister Walker's absent today. Mrs. Barah.
Mrs. Prisco.
Here.
Mrs. Frizella.
Here.
Mister Boone.
Here.
Uh, we have quorum.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion? For the approval of the meeting of our last meet, the minutes of our last meeting on May thirteenth.
I'm with the minutes.
So moved. So moved by Miss Prisco, seconded by Mister Boone. Any discussion? Mister Cruz, can we please have roll call?
Mrs. Parah.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
Mrs. Frizella.
Yes.
Mister Boone.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on, um, if we could have the superintendent's report from Miss Giuseppe.
Good evening. So, uh, on this agenda, there are two, uh, grants that I want to draw your attention to. One, uh, we spoke about a little bit, um, a few weeks ago. Is the Trees for Schools Grant, uh, which, uh, I co-wrote with, um, Mrs. Thomas, Carol Thomas, the Verona Shade Shade Tree Commission. We're asking for sixty thousand dollars, just a little under sixty thousand dollars to plant forty-five shade trees. Um, twenty-one large and twenty-four medium at all six schools, the Civic Center and Liberty and Freedom Fields. Uh, this is a grant that's, uh, partly out of, um, Sustainable New Jersey and, uh, collaboration with the, um, College of New Jersey. We also have on the agenda this evening approval for funding for optimal comprehensive universal screeners or focus competitive grant. Um, and this is a grant offered by the Department of Education, um, to support, uh, local education, um, uh, agencies in adopting and implemented implementing high-quality universal literacy screeners that align with the universal literacy screening criteria outlined in the department's guidance to meet the screening requirements in K through three according to the new law. And we're asking for six thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars for that. Um, it's exciting here over the past, uh, the end of last week and my and Tuesday of this week, uh, we had imperfect Phil. For those of you that don't know who imperfect Phil is, um, I'm sure, um, if you had students at our elementary school, you would have heard, uh, about imperfect Phil. So Sue Steinhardt, um, author of the imperfect Phil books and mother to imperfect Phil, uh, who is a giant Burmese mountain dog. Um, uh, so Bill is imperfect because he failed out of therapy dog school. And the teacher, the therapy dog teacher, uh, said to her, uh, Phil is perfect as he is. And, um, uh, his mom, Sue, started blogging from the imperfect Phil perspective. And those blogs were turned into a book that has since sold about a thousand copies and they've been making their way to different, um, uh, classrooms across the state of New Jersey, um, to promote us, uh, to reinforce positive classroom community, self-awareness, identifying emotions, empathy, and communication skills. And, um, although the kids did report that imperfect Phil was stinky, he was a hit. So, um, and he was just beautiful. Uh, on Tuesday, June third, we have Future Hillbilly Day at Hillbillies Day at the high school. Um, also known as New Student Day. This event is, uh, more than just a tour and or you know, sometimes you have move up day and you follow your schedule. This is an immersive experience rooted in school spirit, connection, and belonging through games, student-led performances, panel discussions, and interactive activities. The high school administration's goal is to help each student feel confident, informed, and inspired as they begin their journey as proud Verona Hillbillies. Um, some highlights of what students are going to experience, um, live performances and competitions with with that will highlight the energy enthusiasm that define, uh, uh, Verona High School. A smooth transition, um, trained upper-class mentors will guide students throughout the day, offering support and building connections. Celebration of the school's traditions, a dynamic showcase of clubs, athletics, arts, and leadership opportunities that make Verona High School unique. And, um, building a community through shared experiences, new friendships, students will begin to feel at home in their new community. So it starts, um, with arrival at eight thirty. They will have, uh, Campus Adventure Bingo Challenge, a student panel for tips for success, Q and A with the, uh, Verona High School teachers and counselors, hero connections and icebreaker games, clubs and sports expos, a student lunch, uh, a ninth-grade reflection panel, and the ultimate hillbilly spirit rally before the students are dismissed at two thirty, between two thirty and two forty-five. So that's new for the high school. Um, we also have our AAPI celebration, our, uh, excuse me. Um, that is, was, uh, planned by, um, our three Mandarin teachers, Mrs. Yang, Mrs. Ho, and Mrs. Kin, and, um, Mrs. Peter and I helped out, but they did the yeoman's work, amazing work, um, that they, uh, planned. So we will be having, um, performances. Uh, sounds of the drum from Korea. Um, this Verona students and teachers Yangji dance, the peacock dance from China, the fan dance from China, rhythms of the valley breeze with palm fans, ulu, a traditional hula, uh, duo from, uh, Hawaii. Uh, Beautiful Matchmakers, um, Raza Jazz, Mongolian Dance Fan Dance. Uh, Master Cho's Talium, uh, will be here to break some boards. And then, uh, finally a finale. Um, it's, uh, should be a really nice night. That is on May thirtieth at seven o'clock at the high school auditorium. And last but not least, we have, uh, just a, a quick staffing updates that time of year. We are in the process for grade one at F N Brown. For that bubble section tenure tack, tenure track position demo lessons are being scheduled. At the middle school, uh, we ha- we had made an offer to, um, a teacher, um, for sixth grade math, um, who turned us down. She's, uh, got an offer closer to home. She lives like down New Jersey Shore. And, um, we are accepting, uh, we had made us, uh, I'm sorry, our special education opening at the middle school. We made an offer to a candidate and it was accepted, uh, so that will be on the agenda for board approval on June tenth. At the high school, we are still looking at, um, looking for a social studies and/or a business education teacher, um, for the financial literacy sections. And unfortunately, the state did not extend the, uh, a law that allowed us to, um, hire retired teacher. So that, uh, the fix that we have in place currently at the high school with Mister Weber teaching financial literacy will not, uh, be available to us next year. So we are, uh, need to go back to the drawing board with, uh, finding a business education teacher or social studies teacher. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Um, moving on, uh, Mister Cruz, can we please have the business administrator's report?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, as we approach the end of the, uh, fiscal year, the business office is on in the end of year preparations, finalizing our financials, closing out and laying laying the groundwork for a smooth transition into the upcoming school year. On tonight's agenda, we are presenting, uh, the March, uh, financial reports, including, uh, the board secretary report, uh, treasurer's report, and the transfer report. And they're all in agreement. Uh, additionally, we are submit, um, we're submitting under resolution E six. Uh, there is a, uh, the new price list for the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six uh, school year, which, uh, has a modest increase of about ten, ten cents. Um, there's one item that's actually fifteen cents. Uh, and before I, I go into the, um, nutrition committee, um, there is also a certification of implementation that is part of our two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four audit. Um, there are three audit findings, um, and this certification certifies that the recommendation has been implemented, um, as suggested by our auditors and is now part of, uh, the district's, uh, standard operating procedures. With, um, uh, the, as a result of our RFP, um, uh, renewing the contract with Pomtonian, uh, we are, we have formed a nutrition committee. Uh, the committee, um, will be meeting early next month and to begin to begin, uh, conversations with Pomtonian on, uh, recommendations on, on nutrition and and making those recommendations to the board for the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so moving on to my favorite report, the student report. Ryan, if you could, let us know.
Great, uh, good evening. Okay, so, um, this past Memorial Day, uh, the VHS Mar- marching maroon and white participated in honoring our, uh, creators veterans in the annual Memorial Day Parade down Boomfield Ave. Uh, and the chamber choir also performed the National Anthem and America the Beautiful for the ceremony as well. Uh, VHS's annual creative arts night is, uh, taking place in the gym right now and, uh, will go till nine P M. And it's showcasing a wide range of student artwork from studio, digital, uh, and stem art classes and alongside various other student creative media, including, um, musical performances. And, uh, I definitely encourage everyone, if they have a moment after this meeting, to just check it out. It's great. It's lively. There's so many people there. The music's great. It's great fun. There's stands like you can get. If you really wanted to, you could get, uh, your face painted. You can get, uh, painted stickers, whatever. Yeah, no, whatever's your forte, but, uh, in athletics, uh, yesterday, both the boys tennis and baseball teams, uh, played state tournament matches against Mountain Lakes and McNair Academy, respectively. And, uh, the girls track team won its second consecutive state sectional championship last week. And furthermore, many of our VHS students have been commended for their achievements. Uh, Jackson Pope and Kelly Barrow were recognized as twenty-twenty-five. Karen Fuchello, Essex County Scholar Athletes, uh, Baccatorian Isabella Lambert was honored as, uh, NJ SIAA Scholar Athlete. Danny Embriano, Embriano was honored last week by the Yogi Berra Museum and Learning Center, uh, for the, uh, SEC Best Teammate Award, and Margot DeCosta was Verona's recipient of the Men of Essex Award, one of the county's oldest and most prestigious awards for student athletes. And last but not least, prom is, uh, next Wednesday, June fourth. And this year's prom will be held, uh, at the Legacy Castle venue in Poplin Plains. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, moving on, uh, to our committee reports, um, we had education this week.
Okay, so I will just share some of the highlights from our education, uh, committee meeting. Um, to begin with, we discussed the, uh, enrichment program for grades K, I'm sorry, grades one through six. Um, parents can expect to see an academic enrichment program guide in early twenty-five, September of twenty-five, I should say, for that school year, um, which will, as typically does, it'll break down kind of, uh, criteria and plans for the program, um, for grades one, six. Um, at this point, there were three hundred and four Verona High School students who took six hundred and eighteen A P exams. So congratulations and good luck to them. Um, as far as the high impact tutoring that has continued, there were two hundred students who were serviced this year. Um, as we've been discussing, the H M H Into Reading pilot, um, is continuing. That will be presented in June, so we can expect as a board to hear about, um, how that's going and to make a decision on that. Our slash program, I'm sorry, slash learning program will continue over the summer, so that too is supporting students, um, who could benefit from additional support, uh, over the summer outside of the E S Y program. So it has nothing to do with that, just additional services. Um, Miss Giuseppe discussed some of the things that happened, um, this month, um, out of the Dreams and Nurture Heart Approach Grant that Miss Simmons had applied for and received. Um, and then the final thing is the, uh, H B W and V H S teachers received additional, um, professional development from the Rutgers Grants that we also received for the community-based learning. Um, so there were four full days of training for that for the teachers, which was excellent to support our life skills program. Um, and then there is also, um, work starting to happen now for an action plan being put together for the eighteen to twenty-one, um, program and the life skills, which is wonderful. And that was it, I think.
Great, thank you. Um, moving on, uh, finance committee, did you guys meet?
Yes, we did. Uh, there's not much additional to say beyond, uh, Mister Cruz's discussion. Um, I will call out one additional, um, notification. Um, they were in the process of, uh, removing the documents, uh, and, uh, uh, re-scanning them, uh, and this will ultimately clear up a couple of, uh, small rooms for potential instructional space in the high school. This is going to be going on during the summer. Um, there should be a decent amount of space, uh, once these, uh, files are taken care of. Everything else stands as Mister Cruz, uh, had reported.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, and now we are going to move on to public comments on agenda action items. Uh, please know that the public participation portion of the meeting affords an opportunity for the public to share their comments about school-related topics. By law, administrators and Board of Education members are not permitted to publicly discuss personnel matters, student discipline, or other issues requiring confidentiality. While we may not respond to comments during the meeting, all input is that is shared with the Board of Education is taken very seriously and helps inform future deliberations and work by the Board of Education and its committee. Answers appear in many forms, including, but not limited to, email superintendent committee reports, board statements, F A Qs on website, or after public comment is closed. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any any agenda action item, please approach the bench. Once recognized, clearly state your first and last name for the record. You will have three minutes to address the board. There will be no cross dialogue during this public portion. If there is a question that can be answered, only the superintendent or board president can respond and will do so at the end of all comments. You will be granted one time to speak and there is a total time limit of one hour for public participation. Please note there will be no back and forth, and we request that you remain respectful. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, Matt Perna, thirty-two Hillcrest Terrace, and I'm a dad of a current Lanning first grade boy. My question.
Sorry, this is, uh, is can you identify the portion of the agenda that you're speaking to?
My question specifically on A nine. Um, I was looking for clarification on the abolishment of the supervisor of STEM position. Um, given, I think, the world's focus on STEM and moving in that direction, the district's adoption of things like B C. Is there a reason why we're eliminating this position? Um, and is there a non-STEM sort of like version of that position? Is that position also being eliminated? And then who is going to sort of fill that gap?
Do you want me to answer that now or? Yeah. Uh, so no one wants to see any position get cut. Um, certainly, um, as a former director of curriculum who, uh, worked hard to bring supervisors back into a district, seeing that. But, um, as this, um, board knows and as the public should know by now, uh, we are in a very large money, uh, issue. And, um, the way RIF and non-renewal are actually RIF works is it has to do with, um, uh, there's a lot of legal ramifications in ripping certain positions. So in this case, this position was, um, of the administrators, the position that we felt as an administrative team that we could absorb the best in terms of we are starting with, uh, the, so the other two positions is a supervisor, special education, and a supervisor of humanities. Going out, um, next year with, uh, a new program in literacy, uh, from kindergarten through, uh, fifth grade, um, cutting a humanities, uh, or E L A supervisor, uh, at this time would not have been, um, advantageous. It also would not have gotten us in terms of salary to where we needed to be to meet the budget. Who will pick that up? Uh, luckily, uh, I was a, uh, science supervisor in Livingston for thirteen years and, um, was also a science supervisor when I was director of curriculum in, yeah, in Kinnon, my prior district. And Doctor Miller, uh, is a math specialist. So between the two of us, we will pick up those, uh, portions of, um, uh, the STEM supervisor, uh, position. So I, does that answer your question? Okay, thank you.
What else? Okay, seeing no one else, we are going to close public comment at this time. Moving forward, uh, to discussion items, does anyone on the board have any new or old business they wish to discuss?
Comment on Ryan's, uh, for the Memorial Day Parade about the marching band. It was like marching, you guys were marching down Main Street, USA. You guys were phenomenal. It was there. You guys do such a great job. So, um, to the choir and to the marching band, thank you for being there on, uh, such a important day.
Thank you. Um, and then moving forward, do we have any correspondence?
So starting with, um, a letter from Anne Mernan, the executive director of Tony's Kitchen, and this is a thank you. Uh, it just says, Dear Verona Public Schools, on behalf of everyone at Tony's Kitchen, I want to express our heartfelt thanks for the generous gift of four hundred and ninety dollars from your National Honor Society fundraiser, which was, was received on five twenty-three, twenty-five. This donation will, will be put to good use as we work toward creating a food-secure community in which everyone has access to nutritional food. Our core mission is to provide food to our neighbors in need in ways that respect their dignity, improve health, and foster inter-independence. Thanks to your kindness, we are able to take nutritious food to where our neighbors are with neighborhood mobile markets, Tony's Grill Food Truck, and deliveries for those who are unable to access our other services. By providing healthy meals to partnering organizations like schools, senior services, libraries, teen programs, and medical groups, we make certain that when a need is identified, it can be met with comfort and dignity, creating these connections between daily gathering spaces and the food support system moves our neighbors toward food security and peace of mind. Your commitment to helping others directly impacts the lives of so many, and we are incredibly grateful for your partnership in this mission. Once again, thank you for your compassionate support. You are our strength with warm regards, Anne Mernan, Executive Director. And the second piece of correspondence, um, uh, is from Mister Mark Work, Workaft. And, uh, his, uh, uh, letter reads, recently, my good friend, fellow hillbilly and graduate of V H S class of nineteen sixty-five, Joel Yanofsky visited the Verona Board of Ed in person and spoke to a woman by the name of Lois, I believe. Both Joel and I have been aware of the civic slight that occurred many years ago when William Bucky Hatchet was supposedly honored at the H B Whitehorn Junior Athletic Junior High Athletic Field with a boulder and a plaque placed in the rear right corner of the complex, quite out of view of anyone attending an event at the field. In contrast, beautifully carved wooden signs announce the entrance to Doc Gold's Baseball Field and the Thomas Siletto Football Field at the high school in full view to everyone. I'm writing this letter to support Joel's request to rectify this sad situation and erect an appropriate sign honoring Bucky. Least we forget that Bucky was a magnificent athlete at V H S, arguably the best ever. All-American in both football and basketball, as well as senior class president while at Rutgers, and an outstanding teacher and coach at, at V H S. Bucky Hatchet deserves more than a rock. Sincerely, Mark Workaft.
Thank you. And then moving forward, uh, to our action items, can I please get a motion, um, on personnel items A one through A twenty-two.
So moved.
Moved by Mister Boone.
I'll second that.
Second by Miss Prisco. Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, Mister Cruz, may we please have roll call?
Mrs. Parah.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
Mrs. Frizella.
Yes.
Mister Boone.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Um, moving on to, uh, section B, education, can I please have a motion for B one through B ten?
I'll move that.
Moved by Miss Prisco.
I'll second.
Second by Miss Ferrer. Any discussion?
Um, I just have a quick question for B for B six, the bilingual child study team is out to support families in a child study team for, okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, can I please have roll call, please?
Mrs. Parah.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
Mrs. Frizella.
Yes.
Mister Boone.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Moving forward to athletics and co-curricula, can I please have a motion for C one through C four?
So moved.
Move by Miss Prisco.
I'll second.
Second by Mister Boone. Any discussion? Hearing them, can I please have roll call?
Mrs. Parah.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
Mrs. Frizella.
Yes.
Mister Boone.
Yes, yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then moving on to finance, can I get a motion for E one through E eight?
So moved.
Move by Miss Prisco. And second by Miss Ferrer. Any discussion? Well, okay, can I please have roll call?
Spar.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
Mrs. Frizella.
Yes.
Mister Boone.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, great. And then finally, in governance and policy, can I get a motion for F one?
So moved.
Moved by Mister Boone.
Second.
Second by Miss Prisco. And any discussion? Seeing none, can I please have roll call?
Mrs. Spar.
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco.
Yes.
Mrs. Frizella.
Yes.
Mister Boone.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Then moving forward of all public comments, um, please note that the public portion of the meeting allows the public to share thoughts and comments about school-related topics. By law, the law administrators and Board of Education members are not permitted to publicly discuss personnel matters, student discipline, or other issues requiring confidentiality. While we may not respond to comments during the meeting, all input shared with the Board of Education is taken very seriously and helps inform future deliberations and work by the board and its committee. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any matter, please approach the podium. Once recognized, clearly state your first and last name for the record. You will have three minutes to to address the board. There will be no cross dialogue during this time. Um, if there is a question that could be answered, only the superintendent or board president can respond and will do so at the end of all comments. You will be granted one time to speak. And there is a total time limit of one hour for public participation. Um, again, please note there will be no back and forth, and we request you remain respectful. Thank you.
Hi, Cassidy Perna, thirty-two Hillcrest. Um, good evening. After the previous Board of Ed, um, meeting and in light of additional information provided by the Board of Ed Superintendent and Township, I had some additional comments I wanted to share tonight. As suggested by certain members of the board, parents reached out to the town council to share our concerns with the collapsing of this third section as landing, as well as for clarity regarding pilot funding. I would first like to note the drastic difference in response that was received from not only the mayor, but multiple members of the town council. Not only were they more than happy to speak with any concerned parent, offering up their time and personal cell phone numbers, a meeting was set in an open forum by the mayor and deputy mayor to present on pilot funding as A meeting was set in an open forum by the mayor and deputy mayor to present on pilot funding as well as answer any and all questions we had. This included offering up suggestions as to how we could continue to advocate for our children. In hindsight, perhaps offering the same opportunity would have been much more productive way to address our concerns and answer questions. Rather than multiple disjointed email exchanges. To be honest, not having this, now having this comparison, I am disappointed in the lack of response from certain board members which included personal emails that went unanswered. I do not, I do want to thank Mr. Boone for taking the time out of his weekend to meet with my husband and I. I would also like to note that at the end of the day, for most of us, this is our first experience with the Board of Ed and I wish it had been different. After both meetings, it became clear that both the board and the township have finger pointed in regards to transparency and desire to meet more frequently in regards to the tight budget and other issues. For two groups whose success highly impacts the other, it's frustrating to learn they don't act more collaboratively. I hope that moving forward, this relationship can change. In regard to the collapsing third section, it is disheartening as a parent to know that despite the known challenges of this class, this was still the decision that was made. And while I appreciate the reassurance from the administration that they have complete confidence in the teacher's ability to manage larger classes while continuing to deliver high quality instruction and support. This decision has nothing but a negative impact on all those involved. I also can't help but wonder, when would the third section be warranted? The unwritten rule had always been twenty-five. If that is no longer, at what number do we say, okay, that's the line? When there is no obvious educational benefit to this choice, I leave you with the question, why are we waiting for our children and teachers to fail before we step up and help them? I think you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else?
Hi, good evening, Sarah O'Connor, uh, forty-one Floyd Road. Um, I want to thank you for your open ears tonight. Again, regarding the collapse of the current first grade, uh, section at Lanning from three classes to two for the upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six school year. While many questions and concerns have been discussed, there are a few items left unclarified that I'd like to address tonight. Um, first, I'd like to address the general response to the concerns of these class sizes next year. Which has overall been have faith in really good teachers. I think we all have faith in our teachers, especially at Lanning. Our support of them is part of the reason why we're here, asking questions and raising concerns. Several of us have been in contact with Mr. Freund to not only share our concerns, but also discuss ways we can support our teachers and work together to benefit our children. We know this, this decision is out of their hands and we know they're going to do their best with the hand that they're dealt. Um, and I was actually discussing this issue with somebody removed from the situation. And she said, maybe this won't be as bad as you think. And while I think there's a lot of truth to that, um, because we do have faith in our really good teachers, the reality is it won't be as good as it should be. For this group of kids whose class sizes are increasing significantly. There is no educational benefit to this change, especially considering that this group has been split into three for two years at such a critical age. We know enrollment is fluid and families moving in and out of Verona is common during the summer especially. Um, I would like to know your projections as to how high in numbers you're willing to allow this, the classes to get before considering a three-class split again. Um, the only response to this question has been Board Policy five one two zero, which allows the superintendent to assign newly um, registered students to schools based on enrollment and available space. Um, so my question is, if a few students in this grade level happen to move out, will those numbers be replaced or will the class be capped where it is now? And basically, what is your projected cap for this class since numbers seem to be the identifying factor and not individual student needs? Um, I thank you for your time and I thank you in advance for clarification.
Thank you.
Matt Perna, thirty-two Hillcrest Terrace. Uh, good evening, everyone. Fortunately, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. I was out of the country for work. Um, but I was able to catch up on the last several meetings, um, using the replays, which was actually incredibly helpful. And then I was, um, some parents were kind enough to send me the user-friendly budget summary as well as the more detailed version. Um, after spending time going through each of those documents, just to get a better understanding of the difficult budget dynamics. I did have some questions for the board and the administration on some specific accounts. And just to be transparent, some of those questions did come up in my conversation with Mr. Boone this weekend. But I thought for the benefit of the broader group, I could sort of reshare them. First, we have a fairly substantial amount of money, eight hundred-ish thousand dollars in the unrestricted general operating budget. I appreciate the group's effort to keep a well-funded operating account, to handle cash flows as well as unexpected expenses. Given that this account is forecasted to be at the same funding level at the end of the school year. Next year, I'm curious if this account could be used to help partially fund a new teacher position. Second, and related to the first, um, we have an estimated two point three million in the capital reserve account. Understanding that this account is used to fund projects like the HVAC upgrades that were in the finance committee report earlier in the agenda. Um, is there room in this account where a line item transfer could be made to the operating account to help fund that teacher position as well? I understand funds in this count, in the account may be allotted to future projects, which have already been decided on. But is there a room to allocate the funds differently or even delay a non-critical planned project? Is, um, also related to finding room in the budget to help fund a new teacher position. There's a healthy six hundred fifty thousand dollar maintenance reserve. Is it absolutely necessary that we hold such a large amount here? Does the capital reserve account not have any ability to help support unexpected expenses throughout the year? Or would tho- that financial burden fall entirely on the maintenance reserve? Um, I don't doubt that these three accounts are well-funded without a lot of hard work from everyone up here today. Um, and years of prioritizing the financial health of the district. That said, is there a way we can put our heads together and get creative to help fund that third second grade section at Lanning next year? In doing so, without materially reducing any of the accounts I mentioned. Um, in the meeting with the mayor and deputy mayor, it was mentioned they have directly helped fund work in the schools outside of the shared services agreement in the past. Is it possible to ask the town to help support, financially support some of the future maintenance projects? Which could help, again, free up additional funding for this third section. And I just want to say I'd be happy to, to help work with anyone here on this or other budget issues, just providing sort of like an outside parent perspective. Um, if you think it would be of value, please feel free to reach out. I'd be happy to help. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, how are you? Um, my name is Stephanie Pogarelic. I have a son who's also at Lanning. Um, and I just wanted to say a few things. You mentioned earlier imperfect Phil visiting the elementary classrooms in the hopes of fostering a positive classroom environment. Do you know what happens to foster a positive classroom environment? Manageable classroom sizes. Lanning parents have asked what options were discussed to stay within budget for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year before a frontline teacher was cut at a school that needs the resource. We still haven't received a comprehensive report or answer to the options that were discussed before a teacher was removed at Lanning. The Verona Board of Ed website has a whole section dedicated to diversity, equity, and belonging. I would like to know how the decision to remove a teacher and combine two classes, classes of twenty-six children each was the equitable decision when this grade at Lanning has the largest number of five oh fours, IEPs, along with the lowest state testing scores across the Verona elementary schools and has been openly described as being energetic by the principal. It just doesn't seem like the equitable decision to me. A few people have mentioned that this decision was based just on numbers. I, I'm not saying that the Forest class doesn't deserve a third teacher. Um, but I do want to point out that they only have three additional students than we do. Um, so taking into consideration, again, the IEPs, the five oh fours, along with our state testing, I feel like those things should have been considered.
There's actually, as of next year, fifty-seven students and at Forest and there's fifty-one at Lanning, so it's more than three students.
Okay, um, I'll have to take a look because the numbers that you've provided us with earlier, there was a difference of three. And I know one of the kids that I, you might have set scheduled to go to Forest has actually requested to remain at Lanning. I know you can't speak about specific children, but that actually just makes it more difficult for us to prove our point. Thank you.
So do you want me to? Yeah, just, um, so there was a question about twenty-five. Um, first of all, this board has never had and currently does not have any, um, classroom limits, uh, in their, in their class size policy. I wrote a policy after, uh, my first year here, uh, that you referenced earlier, um, regarding, uh, giving the superintendent, uh, the ability to place people outside of their jurisdictional school. Um, and in that policy, it says, um, the twenty-sixth student. So I think that's where the number twenty-five is coming from. So the question is, as students are moving in, uh, over the summer, which does happen. Uh, obviously, we get people moving around, people move out, we'll move in. Uh, at this point, it would be my recommendation to new, uh, new students entering the Lanning area, uh, that they would be placed, if they come in as rising second graders, that they would be placed at Forest. Where there are, uh, where there's room in those, much more room in those classes. That's what that policy affords me. Anybody that, um, registers after February one doesn't get to, uh, the choice of a home neighborhood school, I can place them, I would place them at Forest because that's where the classrooms are the smallest in that grade level. So and with regard to, um, some non-critical projects, I'm going to let Mr. Mr. Cruz speak directly to this, but the bottom line is in order to get to the budget that we have, we cut those projects. There's taking capital reserve to fund projects that were cut out of the budget. Um, and, and we don't, spending capital or maintenance reserve on something that's a lasting cost year after year as a teacher's salary would be, is not good practice. So we, that's for like a one-off, it's for a furnace, et cetera, pulling money out of a, a reserve account that's destined for, uh, maintenance and repair and, um, uh, capital, uh, projects on buildings that are all about a hundred years old. Uh, is, is not really a, a prudent move and I wouldn't suggest that we do it. So did you want to say anything in addition to that?
Uh, yeah, so just, uh, clarification on, uh, capital reserves of, uh, two point three, so absolutely, the, the board has, uh, and administration, we've been working diligently to get where we are with that capital reserve, but it's not, it sounds like a, a big amount, but it's really not for a school district with a fifty million dollar budget. Uh, two point three million in capital reserves will get us, uh, the additional HVAC that we need in order to be a hundred percent, um, HVAC connected. Uh, so one of the things is, uh, we have that pending rod grant where, uh, rod grant is covering forty percent of the costs on a, almost, uh, a- anywhere between, uh, the estimate is one point three, one point nine million. Uh, so a million of this, uh, reserve will have to go into that project and then we have other uh, pending projects, uh, that will, uh, need that, uh, for example, HBW spoilers, um, they are constantly in need of repairs. So that is one area that, uh, we'll probably be looking at. Uh, another area is the, uh, the high school field. Um, we, we have the press box that is actually, uh, kind of like on its last leg, so we definitely would have to use, uh, capital reserve funds in order to address that. Uh, and then eventually the turf field will have to be replaced, uh, um, so these are, uh, these are all capital needs that the district will eventually need and uh, the reality is that that amount, uh, two point three is, is definitely a su- a nice size to support us in getting there, but it wouldn't be something that, um, that we could do. The, the other thing is that, uh, the board per, um, uh, New Jersey Administrative Code, um, the board has to request anything that comes out of capital funds to be approved, um, by the county. So the county has to approve it and basically it, it does have to go for capital needs. Uh, the second part, the maintenance reserves gives the board a little bit of flexibility. So maintenance reserves, um, just because it says maintenance reserve, doesn't mean it just has to go to maintenance, but um, as, uh, Superintendent, these have been stated, it, these are for one-offs. Uh, so in the case that there is a situation where there's an additional cost that we weren't expecting and we would have to transfer funds from facilities into another, let's say, an education line item. We will have, the board will have that option with the maintenance reserve. So, um, in the same sense, um, when I got here four years ago, we only had eighty-nine thousand dollars in maintenance reserve. Right now, that, uh, almost seven hundred thousand dollars is actually a nice little cushion. It's not a lot of money, but it is a cushion to protect us, especially on the rainy days. So for example, on personal finances, we always say it's recommended to have three to six months of expenses. You don't, you never know what's going to happen tomorrow. This is actually our rainy day fund, six, uh, se- almost seven hundred thousand dollars. It, and, um, and hopefully with the next, if there is a surplus, which, um, as I reported previously, um, the likelihood of us having a surplus on the expenditure is unlikely. The only area that we're seeing possibility of a surplus for the end of this fiscal year will be in our revenues. Uh, that's where we will, will actually build that cushion to carry us in the future years that, um, we're gonna actually, um, hopefully stop the bleed, but it, it is gonna, financially, we are gonna feel the, the pressure that every single district around us is feeling. Uh, the good thing is that we're definitely in a better uh, stable, um, fiscal operating sense. But we are gonna continue operating in, in any case to, to make the, the, the smallest impact in the classroom. And as you see in the agenda, that impact is on non, non-classroom positions and hopefully um, continue operating as, as we are, um, with the, the staff and, 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 and the operating personnel that we currently have. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cruz, um, moving forward, can I please have a why don't I have a resolution to adjourn? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Boone? Second by Ms. Prisco. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, that would be the end of our May twenty-eighth meeting. The next regularly scheduled public meeting will be held on Thursday, June twelfth with confidential session at six PM and seven PM public session in the Verona High School Learning Commons. That is Thursday. Um, not our usual day on Tuesday. Thank you very much and have a good day.
Need to do a motion. I need what to do.